Good evening, everyone. The City of Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, October 7th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Can we please have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Kreidler is absent this evening. Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Mayor Verkamen.
Here.
City Manager Katman.
Here.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Wait, we need to...
Yes, but I'd like to make a motion first to excuse Commissioner Kreidler.
Support. We have a motion and support. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Public comment, anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name. Limit your comments to five minutes. Commission will not respond, but we will follow up as necessary. Go ahead.
I just want to say I was disappointed in how the outcome was when I requested just a small change to be clarified in the minutes. If you look at the Open Meetings Act, Mr. Davis is right in what he attested to. There is certain things in there that are required to be in there. However, it does have a clause in there that leaves it up to the public body to prepare a more detailed set if they so desire. What disappointed me as well is when the city clerk said, "This is all you're going to be getting from me from now on, is this person commented, this person commented, this person commented." I really think the city body needs to meet, they need to meet with the city clerk, and they need to come up with some decisions about what they're going to put in the minutes, and also assure that when the public goes up here and speaks, we want to be heard, but we also want to be on the record and be part of that history. That's all. Now, Commissioner Callahan, you said something in the last meeting, and I agree with you 100% about you're not trained for this job. You don't have training for this job. You get elected, you're thrown into the fire. Idea I've been thinking about is January seems to be a light load for the City Commission, new year and everything. Why not work, why can't the city work with their city attorney to do some workshops for city commissioners? Go through some of the basics. Maybe start off with Robert's Rules. Start off with FOIA, or what's known as the Freedom of Information Act. Then go into the Open Meetings Act. Then maybe towards February, do a workshop on budgeting. Not your budget workshop, but what is a city budget? How a city budget is structured? What's required in a city budget? Give all commissioners a foundation to work off of. And this part, this next part is purely my opinion, my theory after that is the rest of it. Listen to people, research the topics, formulate questions, do your homework, ask questions on things you don't understand, and just always try to listen to people and make the best decision possible for the residents of the town. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Rosely Squires, 211 Michigan. Okay, I want to read something here. "We, the people of the State of Michigan, grateful to a mighty God for the blessing of freedom and earnestly desiring to secure these blessings, undiminished to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution." This is how our Michigan Constitution starts off. First line reads, "All political power is inherent in the people. Government is instituted for their equal benefit." And here it means like, and the lawyer here would probably know better than I, but it means like, things like deep-rooted, built-in, characteristic attributes, existing as something permanent. You know, when we get sworn in here, even my little roles here as, on the retirement board, or on the historical board, or my husband being on the library board, we swear in to uphold the state and the country's Constitution. And there's a spirit of the law here, that everybody has equal benefits. Second here, it says here, "The people have the right peaceably to assemble, to consult for the common good, to instruct their representatives, and petition the government for redress of grievances." Now, I grant you, this is, this is for state legislators, but we're just a couple rungs below it, because you got county government, you've got city government, county government, then state legislators. People want transparency in government. Second, freedom of speech, here I'm going to read. Every person may freely speak, write, express, and publish his views on all subjects, being responsible for the right, and no law shall be enacted to restrain or abridge the liberty of speech. This is something that bothers me. I've watched this, I didn't come to the meeting last time, but I saw it on TV, and I watched it last night, and I couldn't sleep. I went, you know, I really don't like the way people were treated. I don't like the attitude of some people. It's like a lack of transparency, it's not according to our Constitution, it's not good government, and I didn't like that for my city. So I pulled this out, and I read this over many times today, and I thought a lot about what my mother said. You know, there's a lot of like, oh, well, we can't hardly get people to fill the roles and, oh, like, poor me. I really hate that, because you know what? You took leadership positions, and like my mother always said, you take a leadership position, daughter, then you put on your big-girl pants, and you have to go with the flow. You know, I was put on my little condo board recently, and they already said to me, you know what? I didn't like the way you ran the meeting. I didn't even run a meeting yet. The only thing I did was because I didn't want to save our condo board 35 bucks, I got the Conservation Club building for us for free. I didn't run the meeting, but already somebody says, "Well, I didn't like the way you ran that meeting." I didn't even run the meeting, I wasn't even elected then. I remember some years ago, and Lisa can remember this, where a lady wrote a really large letter to the editor saying that I was a bad apple. Publicly said I was a bad apple, upset a lot of people in town. They said, "You must be upset." And I go, "No, I think, hey, it's her freedom of speech, she could say what she wants." You know, my husband did, he was buying me all these pins that are apple, I still have one. But you know what? I don't think that, you know, this complaining is warranted. Put on your big-girl pants or your pig-boy pants and just lead. This is the people's government too, and they have the right to speak. Thank you very much. And another thing, it goes along with our Constitution that we swear to uphold. It is the spirit of the law.
Anyone else?
Laura Scatia, 430 South Water Street. I would like to address the Commission and Mayor Verkamen tonight regarding the purchase agreement for 300 Broadway, which is on the agenda. I do not understand how the Commission could consider this without doing their due diligence to find out the value of this asset. Can our city afford to give this property away for a dollar when it could be worth far more? I understand and appreciate Friends of City Hall's efforts, but their goal is to save the building. How do we know a potential buyer doesn't have the same goal and would be willing to pay more than a dollar? I am afraid that the city could be selling, setting up Friends of City Hall for failure because 300 Broadway requires tremendous work and someone with deep pockets and a great vision. I also want to mention that the city would be displacing the teen center, as Friends of City Hall has no intention to keep River Rec Teen Zone in the building. I recall from a previous meeting that the city was looking for real estate agents to provide a comparative market analysis of three properties. I see two properties mentioned, but not 300 Broadway. I am hoping that tonight, the Commission will not vote on this item, and instead use this opportunity to move forward to finding a commercial real estate company who has a broader reach to other counties and who can look at this property and 303 South Water Street with new eyes. I believe that if the city were to have a commercial real estate company perform a market analysis, that they would find 303 South Water Street to have a higher value, and 300 Broadway may see the same. I appreciate you listening to me tonight, and I hope that you choose due diligence. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of September 2nd, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion or changes?
Down here. The unfinished business portion, where we discussed the investigation, is really poorly written. There's some facts in there, a lot of things were eliminated that should be in there so that it shows both sides. The very second paragraph, that one's got some bad stuff in it, and then when we get to about the fourth one, that wasn't done right. The fifth one, there's an issue. The seventh one is totally incorrect. And so all I'm asking for is that somebody go back through this, this portion of this stuff, and there's some on the third, the fifth page too, that needs to be addressed. But there's a lot of things that need to be put in here, because basically what's happened is this is kind of a one-sided thing, and a lot of the facts that came out weren't addressed. So I'm asking for this to be reevaluated.
Chris, or Hallie, you want to comment on that?
The minutes are the clerk's interpretation, my understanding, but if the board chooses the whole they want it changed, then we can look at that.
I don't have a problem with that, but there's things that were left out here that really need to be addressed in here, that were part of this discussion. And if they're not in here, then it's all one-sided. And so I'm just asking again to please go back through it. I can point you out into a couple items, and I can let you know, be happy to do that. But there are some discrepancies in here that twist this to one-sided, and this is a very important discussion, and I think it's important that we capture this properly to make sure that it's fair, and that's all I'm asking for.
I listened to the meeting minutes twice and compiled that. I thought I was very neutral, so if the board chooses again and they want to rephrase that, I need direction on that, because I, like I said, I listened to it twice and read my minutes, my notes I took, and I thought I was being very neutral, so.
You want me to give you...
Which you're supposed to be.
Would you like me to give you an example? Okay, so in this one section, it was about when, when the subcommittee met. I brought up the fact that the meeting, after I left, the meeting went into the chambers of the clerk. It says in here that you went into the thing and you contacted the attorney. It was brought up that there was three other people in that office at the same time.
That's not what happened. I went in to contact the attorney.
It was brought up...
They may have followed me in there, but the meeting did not continue, Lisa.
The meeting, I don't care what happened there. All I'm saying is, that's what happened at this meeting, and that's how it was relayed in this particular meeting, okay? We asked Jim...
I'm not going to put in untruth in here that I believe to be untrue.
I'm not asking you to put in untruth. I'm asking you to put in what happened at the meeting, and that's what happened at the meeting. So it's, see, you're cutting out and you're trying to determine this. Now, Jim Heslop was here, and he confirmed that because he was in the room. All I'm asking for is fairness, and right now, that whole section is totally unfair, and it's not even close to what was presented at the meeting. So again, I'm asking, this is, this is not our interpretation of what happened at that meeting and what happened, whatever. This is the interpretation of what happened at the last meeting, and those are the discussions that came up at that meeting, and I'm asking for some of this stuff to put in here. There was another part, where's the other one? When we talked about the letter, and that's not quite right either, because I know Mr. Davis read me his response to whether that letter should have been given out. He pretty much read me the whole response. But anyway, a lot of the stuff, there's a couple areas that, this is what was said in this particular meeting, I don't care what happened. The investigation has to root out whatever else went on behind the scenes. But that whole discussion did happen here in this meeting, and I'm asking for some of this stuff to be put in there. If it's not, well then, these minutes, just, they don't reflect what happened at our meeting.
I get, I see where our city clerk is, where it's coming from, where she's not, she's saying, "I'm not going to put something in here that didn't happen," but I also agree with Commissioner Hendrick's, where I'm saying that this was the meeting. I mean, this, that was the conversation in the meeting.
Yes.
So...
I'm just asking for that to be captured.
Well, I read the minutes also, and I didn't think it was the true thing of what we discussed and what happened, so.
Well, you can't say it's not true, because it is true, because, Chris, you know, our city clerk, like she said, she went over it twice. She knows that it was a, you know, like every meeting, every meeting has to be accurate, you know? I guess it depends, you know, she's the professional interpreter, she went to school for it, and then, then we want your interpretation.
I'm not asking, it's not my interpretation, it's what happened at the meeting. We discussed the entire thing at the meeting. I brought up, she said she was in the office by herself. I asked Mr. Heslop, was four of you in the office? He said yes. You said, then you didn't remember.
I did, not as on the phone.
Exactly.
But it wasn't a meeting.
So, all I'm saying is, you cut that out...
If you'd like me to put in there that you mentioned, you brought that up, I'll be happy, it's what the board wants, it's not, it's what the board wants as a whole. If you want me to change it, I'll change it.
Right, and again, to insinuate that there was, you know, a meeting when there was not a meeting...
I'm not, I told you, that's part of the investigation, okay?
Right, that's exactly right.
But it was discussed, and all I'm asking for is, what we discussed in there needs to be put in here, and you're cutting it out, which means basically these minutes are crap, and you're putting it one-sided...
So you're asking for a debate a minute.
Oh, wait, the minutes are then one-sided, and a lot of the items that were brought up are no longer in here where they should be, and that just makes it look worse. I mean, we're trying to get through this to make sure that we're transparent to the people in this community. You want to be transparent, then put in the discussion that we had at the last meeting. That's all I'm asking.
What I'm going to ask right now is that we are very careful with what we say. Telling her that the meeting minutes are crap is not appropriate. It's not appropriate. There's other ways to say it.
They're not correct, if you want me to say that.
There we go.
And they, they're misleading, and they're totally incorrect. That whole section there is totally incorrect.
So what can we do, what can we do with this? I've never had this situation before, so...
Well, we still have the tape. I don't think that you guys keep tapes forever. You destroy or erase the tapes. Couple meetings after minutes are approved, once you guys have gotten through them, you get rid of the, so we still have the tape. Just have the clerk review the tape again and see if she sees any changes.
Right. Okay. So I need a motion for that. Can we just table these?
You could, you can table these, these, these City Commission, this, this one.
I'll make a motion to table the September 2nd meeting minutes.
Support.
Until, until we review the...
Till the next meeting.
Right.
Is that fine till the next meeting?
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion or changes? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission's special meeting minutes of September 27th, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion or changes on that? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes of September 27th, 2021?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda, we've got departmental activity reports, the Marine City Area Fire Authority Run Report, the Planning Commission meeting minutes of August 9th, 2021, the Community and Economic Development meeting minutes of July 28th, 2021, the Community and Economic Development meeting minutes of August 25th, 2021. We have a business license for KNOT, not yoga, which is going to go behind Sweet Tooth and the old Anointed Store, Kristen Baxter, Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks, and then the Halloween Trick or Treating, which is going to be Sunday, October 31st, between 5:00 and 8:00 PM. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
And I need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkamen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And financial business. I need a motion to approve expenditures, including payroll, for $4,369,886.81.
I'll make a motion to approve the expenditures, including payroll, for $4,369,886.81.
All right. We have a motion and support.
Personally speaking, I felt these were fairly, a little bit disjointed and stuff. And again, I think, and this was mentioned in a previous meeting, and I do know that we're dealing with, you know, temporary employees at the moment, but, you know, just some of the descriptions for the things were just, this is what was done, but it doesn't detail what was actually purchased. I don't know if that's a bridge too far. Mike, I don't, it was like stuff at lumberjack, and I'm honestly wondering to myself, like, well, what, what hose repair equipment was purchased? It's $6.25, you know, I agree, it doesn't really matter, but if it's a bridge too far to, you know, it's to itemize, okay. And, you know, some of these are onesie-twosies. But then the other thing, and just being a newer commissioner to the group here, in terms of this reporting, there's some that comment on, like, monthly health insurance premiums, that's obviously out, but there were some tax, so here's like, due to schools, that's, you know, a disbursement that would go out, and that's a portion of our taxes that goes out to the various portions of the East China School District as, you know, agreed. But then there were some other ones that were due to Marine City, but those are kind of listed as, here, due to city. These, to me, are listed as, should be income, because it's the summer taxes. So I just am personally slightly confused. So that one's on page 16 of 23, in the 23-page document, it says, "Due to City" on M017. But it's just, it was a large bill, so I really wanted to scrutinize and go through it and just, you know, make sure that there's, nobody else had any issues with it.
Yeah, well, it's not normally what we get, but anyway, there was one on that same one, you were on page 16, I was on page 18 of 23.
Okay.
There's a bill in there for ServePro. What was that for?
The last commission, we had to basically spend that $300 bill.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Because of the wipeys.
Yeah.
All right.
I put a sign on all of our wipeys, "Do not flush." And I circled the thing that says it's the new flush technology. Still no.
Still no.
I have a question on the building inspector. It shows the hours that he works in the office, but I also want to know how he's mixing the hours with the inspections. If he's supposed to be in the office working in the office time, then he shouldn't be out doing inspections during, in the office time. Because you're paying him for permits, you're paying him, he's getting a double dipping. He's getting paid while he's in the office for both. I work for municipalities, I get paid once. I don't get paid for, I get paid salary or I get paid by permit. I don't get paid both.
What page is that on, Bill? Tracy's page.
Tracy. I think it was a $3,000 cost to him. I had it marked, and now I can't find it. Sorry, my...
Yeah, it was.
I guess, I guess that we, I should look at it, or go in and talk to City Manager about his contract, or can I do that?
Yeah. She'd like to come in and talk about the contract.
We can take a look, and I, I'm still getting my arms wrapped around how it all works. I can tell you, I know when he is in, he will be in and out of the office to go do different things. But there's, where was this at?
In the consent agenda.
In the consent agenda is the breakout of his invoice and how he did his billing. How many hours and which days?
It's about four, five, six pages in.
Yep. So there's your breakout, though.
Yeah, it was an hours, the one that I was looking at, just had the hours, his office hours, and then...
That's how it is.
Yeah, I got that. Okay. Okay. I just had a question, because that's been going on for a while. I work for the city, and I can tell you by fact that when he was supposed to be in this office on a Thursday, he was out on another municipality, and he was doing an inspection, and I was subpoenaed by an attorney, and we went out there, and he was, he's been out there all day, so I know he wasn't in the office. And he's supposed to be working in the office, I don't want to pay him for, when he's not working for us.
I'll look into it.
So we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkamen.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
[inaudible] Mayor, can I ask you to ask Commissioner Hendrick to make her voice out, so that those of us in the audience...
Sure can.
...can understand her vote?
Yeah. Was that a yes or a no?
It was a yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving down to tax refunds. Can I have a motion to approve the tax refunds?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions about the tax refunds?
Yes. So I pulled out an old one, and I know you're dealing with, somebody else was trying to pull these for you. This trial balance thing, I don't know what it's for, that's, doesn't need to be there. I pulled out an old one, it should have the year up here on there. It just says, it says balance sheet, it says September, and it should say what year. I was trying to use one for an example so that I could pull it out. This was from another packet I had. So, and then I think the other stuff, let's see if she did the same thing on the revenue. This one says period ending, yeah, so this one has this on here, but, but then it has some other note about the fiscal year completed 25.21%. So I'm not quite sure. This one looks okay, this one's a little iffy, but again, it should have a year on there. I don't know if that can be added later.
Commissioner, what I can say about these is quarterly per your charter, you are supposed... Commissioner, what I can say about these is quarterly per your charter, you are supposed to be receiving financial documents.
Yes.
But you haven't been.
Yeah.
So there was not a template in the system for our temp to pull. So she did not know how to pull it.
Okay.
So she pulled some reports that she knew how to pull, and I don't think that they really should have gone in, because I don't think that they are appropriate.
Yeah.
But we will make sure that you have the proper ones for the quarterly reportings like you need.
Yeah, because I know this is September, and I don't know if we ever got anything for August or...
You haven't received a quarterly report in a long time.
Yeah. So should we just not approve this, because it's not quite right?
Those weren't even in here. Those were more of an FYI, as a report for you to see. The expenditures is what you needed to approve. These other documents were merely an FYI to meet the charter requirement of having some financial documents.
Usually, we accept and file and do all that kind of good stuff with them, so that's, that's all I'm asking. I wouldn't really want to accept and file these, because they're not really correct.
I don't blame you.
Let's, let's just not act on that.
We can bring them back in the right form, ma'am.
But, but folks, you're supposed to get these quarterly, and you haven't been getting them quarterly for some time now. It's in your charter.
Yep. Okay, so we're, we're just going to go right past this one, then?
Yeah, just...
Yeah.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah. I mean, it wasn't even listed on the financial business.
No, right. We're on the tax.
We approved expenditures, which we did.
The tax refund.
Which we did.
Right.
All right, we're going on to the American Rescue Plan request approval.
What about the tax?
We got a vote on the tax refunds. We have a motion and support.
Oh, right. Sorry.
And then discussion.
Well, didn't we already have a motion and a support for the tax refunds?
Correct.
No.
Yes.
Who? We only were doing the other stuff. We had, that's the next thing, we were just doing the expenditure.
I have a motion by Jake and supported by Bill.
Yep. Yep.
I guess, okay, so...
So then we were asking the questions. And I thought, I thought we were just passing on this one.
No, we were passing on the financial statement.
Okay, got it.
Sorry, yeah.
We still want to vote on the tax refunds.
Okay.
Correct.
So any more questions on, on the tax refunds?
I guess my question is, we've never gotten these before. They've always been included, because she's, like, this first one, she's right, included in the, we've already approved this, so is there a reason why now we're getting these?
I can speak to that. I was under the impression, in my past experience, that when the city pays any portion of money back out to a resident, that the commissioner, the council should vote on that. So I asked Curtis about it when I saw these bills come across my desk, and he agreed that you should see these out separately. You should have always seen these out separately, because they are noteworthy of what they are. So this is your FYI, that this is how you will see these going forward, to make sure that they do stand out from the regular reporting.
Okay.
But they do jive. I saw them in...
Yes.
They match, they match up with the...
Yep.
All right, so we have a motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're, now we're moving on to the American Rescue Plan request approval. And our city manager will speak on this.
So this is very exciting, that the approval did come in on the 22nd. We were notified that we were approved for the $424,000. We should see that money start trickling in, and I do believe that we just received a deposit of half of it. We will get the other half shortly, I would assume. And then we will need to start our work groups, or whatever we want to do, to start narrowing down our purpose and intent for this money. They've moved the deadline back for when we need to submit our stuff to the state. But they are keeping us notified of when that will be. So the money is ours to start contemplating what and how we want to use it here in the city.
I know there's, there's only four ways you can use it, and I think the only one that it's going to fit for us is that we have to use it for infrastructure. So...
Yeah, they're pretty specific on this about your use of this money, so the state has indicated they're going to issue some readable guidance. They're going to try to work on their language about what municipalities, because everybody's asking, what can we use the money for? What can we use the money for? Can we use the money for roads? And we don't think so. But they're, they're, they're going to try to delineate it out, what you can use it for. Then you should get your group together, and you should start talking about how, how and if you want to use the money. The reason it's on the agenda tonight, though, is just, I, I had talked to Megan about this, and I said, we really, we really should put something on the agenda for us to, you know, to, to, to just acknowledge and approve that our request is, has come through.
And that's going to be part of the infrastructure committee, and it'll be involved in this.
I don't know what committee you're going to...
We have an infrastructure committee.
You have one that's existing, so when the state issues what you can do with the money, you should then decide what committees should look at.
We're talking about infrastructure, our sewer water.
Yep.
I think all the other three were COVID-related.
And I think that's what we've been waiting for, is to be able to get to the streets that the sewer has got the problems.
Well, I, my, my opinion with, and working with other communities on this, take a minute and pat yourself on the back and say good job to yourselves.
You happy about this, Mr. Ettrich?
And this was the topic of public comment, too, as to that we were potentially getting this money, so...
All right, moving on to unfinished business. We have ordinance number...
Did we, did we vote on, somebody should make a motion to receive?
There's no action on this one.
Just receive, file, and, and accept the the, the approval.
Make a motion to receive, file, and accept the approval of the American Rescue Plan Act. Support. Item 8C in our financial business.
We have a motion and support. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried. Now, moving on to unfinished business, we have ordinance number 2021-02. The amendment to section 92.03, open burning, the first reading introduction. So I need a motion to approve the introduction of ordinance number 2021-02.
Point of clarification, this is just to introduce it, but there still can be discussion and amendments to set.
Oh, yes.
Ordinance?
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we introduce the first reading ordinance number 2021-02, amendment to section 92.03, open burning.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
I've had one request. I know the Chief Slankster talked to a member of the community, and they asked, because of, this says in here, it's on page two, that you can have larger than 30 inches, yes, so he asked if anything larger than that, people already had purchased, could be grandfathered in. And Joe said, yeah, but he'd like to have that mentioned in here. So that's the only change that I've gotten so far.
The only question I would have with that is, how are you going to determine what's grandfathered in and what's not?
I understand.
Should he inspect those, those particular ones, so he can have a note of them? If they're over that, over what's in the ordinance, do an inspection, so he has a list.
Yeah, and, and I talked to the chief on this directly, and, and he does agree that the size should be grandfathered if it's, if it's a different size. But the balance of the setbacks to structures and property lines and the like should still have to be met.
Be adhered to.
Yes.
So, you know, if you're sitting there and you've already spent money, and you've dug out a 35-inch, you should be able to keep it, but it still has to meet the other setback issues for fire safety. That's what he...
Yeah.
That's how, and I think that's what he said.
Yeah.
Would that fall under our non-conforming ordinance?
Well, it, it, your, your question is, is once we enact this, would that be a non-conforming structure going forward? And I would say probably, because it's affixed to the ground, right? That would be one of your first criteria. And then it would be contrary to the ordinance. So if they ever remove it and want to replace it, they would have to go back to 30 inches.
Okay. Anybody else?
I only would rec, I know some friends that have the in-ground corrugated steel type. And I believe those come in six-inch increments, or maybe foot increments, but to that end, I guess my recommendation, I will investigate that. I will take it under my own to investigate it, but possibly change that to 36 inches.
I can tell you that what I already, they do not come in 30, what you're talking about.
They do, I just ball them.
In 30?
But, well, it's a freestanding fire pit.
Okay, but the one, the other ones...
Corrugated.
They don't, they don't come in 30 inches.
Exactly.
They do come in 36.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay, so that's already been confirmed by our legal expert.
Right, so you may want, we may want to talk to him about it being 36, or less.
Right. That at least allows for, and these are in the ground, which I think is, you know, more safer from a spreading aspect. So I at least want to, you know, show the community that we thought through, you know, commercially available items and things like this, to ensure that the public is still protected. And that may save a bunch of our grandfathered ones, too.
Right.
Because I don't think you can get as small as a 24. I think like 36 for those conduit ones.
Right, I know.
And then the final thing, and maybe the verbiage is okay, but just that, because a lot of people, they do the inner ring, and then you put a larger outer ring around that and fill it with sand, or concrete, or gravel, right? We ensure that, it does say, must be capable of containing all burned material no larger than 30 inches in diameter, but that we specify that that is the inner ring diameter, specifically containing the combustible material.
So not the decorations or the protection around it, just, just the part that holds the fire?
So that would be my request to add that verbiage, as well as 36 inches.
Inner ring diameter?
Inner, yeah. The actual... Combustible material diameter, I don't know. Right. You know? That the...
I get you.
Got it.
And then last thing, maybe if there are square ones, which I do have a kind of square one, where are you measuring the diameter? So, again, maybe a caveat for square fire pit.
But is a square an actual fire pit, or is it...
Yeah, so I have one that's a freestanding one also, that, again, apparently was illegal until now, apologies. Admitting culpability here, but anyway, the, it is, the place where you put the logs is square. So, I mean, it's kind of angled in, but, you know, it physically is a square. And I've seen a bunch of those, too, so...
I have to say, Commissioner Ross, I've never known anyone who had a square one.
I'm a square, what can I say?
Me neither. Me neither. Okay, so we have, we, obviously Bobby made notes of all that.
Yep. Good points. Good points.
So as we're doing, as we're doing is doing the introduction anyway, so we're going to take all this to Chief Slankster, and so, roll call. Right?
Yes.
Yes.
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Are we going to, we're not going to reintroduce it then with the amendments? Can we?
We can do it at second reading, bring it back with the...
Sounds good.
Initial reading.
Move it along.
Okay, Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the dangerous building at 924 Metropolis.
So I'll, I'll, hang on, hang on a second. I'll, I'll speak on this one to get it introduced, so commissioners, we've talked about this site a few times. I don't want to go through all of the history. I have a synopsis of all the dates, and I know you guys understand this, but after the last meeting, I was encouraged that I received a phone call from an attorney who I've known for many years, and I'm not going to do justice to his last name, so I'm going to call him Gary. Gary contacted me, and, and with a lengthy letter that I passed along to you folks, indicating his client's version of, of the history, and, and did, and did finally include the structural analysis that we had been all talking about for a long time, and so it's, it's in there. So since then, I've been working off and on with Gary, and he's been working off and on with his clients. And I think that they wanted to come here tonight and make a proposal for you to possibly entertain regarding this structure that may have some positive outcomes, in my opinion legally, going forward. So I know Gary is here. Gary, you can say your last name.
Gender Nalik.
Gender Nalik.
Gender Baltimore.
Pretty easy, just like in the Baltimore.
Gender Nalik.
One of 11, fourth holder.
That's your sister?
Right, we have cradle-to-grave service. One of my sisters is a doctor, I'm a lawyer. My brother was a priest, he's a priest, and Pat has a funeral home. And then there's schoolteachers and entertainers in between. So Gary Gennarala, on behalf of the property owners.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Phil's known me for dinner, too.
Other municipalities.
I like your candy supplies, so while I'm down here, I'll go to my sister's house and get some nutrition. I've had three bananas today. But anyways, in this letter, I said forth, we think a fair proposal has practicalities to it. So in the first item, that the estate would be given until July 1st, 2022, to demolish the house. My client's been in contact with contractors. She is close to having someone give her a bid. But in the real world, things take time. That the, that the personal representative of number two, or her contractor, would apply for an appropriate demolition permit for the structure. The permit would be issued by the city of Marine City in its normal fashion. Obviously, the utilities have to be disconnected, the water, the electric, the gas, and the sanitary sewer, and presumably the city of Marine City, the DPW, would oversee the disconnect of the municipal utilities. The, then in three, that pursuant to the demolition permit, that the personal representative or its successor would have the right to build a new single-family residence on the property without the necessity of some rezoning request. The information that you had provided to me, it would appear that the property owner is entitled to build a new residence structure on the property in question without having to obtain some rezoning of the property. As long as the home meet the appropriate setback requirements, that the property owner would have the right to seek any appropriate variance if the need arises. Four, that there'd be no limitation on when a new home would be built. Five, that if the demolition permit is not issued by the city of Marine City to the owner of the property in question before July 1st, 2022, that the city of Marine City would have the right to hire a contractor to demolish the residence, and the cost of that demolition would be the responsibility of the property owner, and that the city of Marine City would, could place a lien on the property similar to a property tax lien. Then in the next paragraph, I just gave, you know, some general information as to the width of the property, 84.92 feet. That part of it, looking at the zoning map that the city provided to me through Bob, is zoned R1A, single-family residential, requires a 60-foot wide lot. This lot obviously meets it at 84.92. And that we would just ask that the city confirm those, that information. Then I went on to say, as further understanding, that part of it is zoned R1A, that area requires an eight-foot side yard, and the front setback is 25 feet. And the 20, and the R1B, the front yard setback's 30 feet, and the side yard is 10. So it would appear to me that there's clearly a significant building envelope to build a new residence on this piece. Initially, when I was contacted, it was my client's information and mine, that maybe part of the property was zoned multifamily. In some municipalities, you can build a single-family residential structure in a multifamily district, because it's a lesser included use density. So I just asked that a person from Marine City can confirm that if part of it is zoned multifamily, that she'd have the right to build a home there, or the successor and interest. Because I had made some of those inquiries in my email of May, September 22nd. So we just wanted that confirmation. So I think this is a reasonable solution, from my client's perspective and from the city's perspective, where it appears that the city wants this older home demolished. I've been to the property a couple of times. I've been inside. There's no one living there. We would agree, I didn't put that in the letter, but that... We would agree, I didn't put that in the letter, but that no one would live there as a matter of public health and safety. So if you had any questions, we try to answer them.
I have a question. So number four, it says there's no time limitation as to building a new home on the property.
Correct. So by that, let me just give you an example. Let's say the house is torn down December fifth, 2021. It's then a vacant piece of property, like any other vacant piece of property in any municipality. The current owner, the future owner, can sit and maintain the grass, and they could build the house one year from now, four years from now, five years from now. And I put that in there just so that there's no surmise from somebody's perspective that a house has to be built there in a certain timeframe. And looking at the stuff, and I, I did view the video of one of your council meetings, where this issue was discussed, and it appears from the city's perspective that they want this house demolished. My client's willing to do that in the timeframe, once it's demolished. The property taxes would come down if it's done by December thirty-first of this year, because the structure wouldn't be there. Then in the future, when a house is built, the property taxes would be adjusted to reflect the value of the new structure. So that's why I put that in there. So I think, I think this is a reasonable resolution. I've been practicing for like forty-seven years, for twenty-six years. I represented a lot of municipalities in Macomb County. Since then, I've been on the other side of the podium. But I think it's workable.
We've.
And we wanted to get it to you earlier, but sometimes things take time to get the details together.
We've had, we've had, he's been in touch directly and receiving direct communications from our building official on, on the setbacks and the zoning and whatnot. So we, we've been exchanging that information through Tracy.
Yeah, and I think I misspelled her name, but that's who.
Is.
Gracie.
On the second. I changed the name to protect the innocent.
I guess my question is, why is her property zoned two different ways?
Well, that's a good question. And I, I, you know, I looked, it's, it's a, it's a long.
Right.
Narrow piece of property that seems to have a line that runs through it. A and B.
Yeah.
Either one is, is good for the building of a, of a residential house. One has more generous or restrictive setbacks, however you want to look at it. But I think Tracy's answered every question that they've had, except for the last one about the multifamily, which I think you're right on, if it's a lesser use, it would be permitted. It still is, it still is in your tax system as one lot, even though there's a split zoning on it.
I'm just wondering how it got that.
History, Lisa, that is a great, we tried to figure it out.
Right.
At the end of the day, it probably doesn't matter if it's going to be a residential home. What I was encouraged with was just, you know, our ability to have communication now with somebody on this, this matter, because I know you've, this board, by the way, Gary has struggled, you know, they don't want to rip anyone's house down prematurely or, or wrongfully. But we were having a little trouble getting, you know, and since you've been involved, it's, it's been good communication. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Or I appreciate that.
Right.
So how do you want us to proceed with this?
Well, I, I think that this evening, the only thing that we could do is, is, is you could approve the terms of this proposal, and then Gary and I could work on reducing this to something that we, we sign, so it's in our records and we know what we're doing.
Okay.
And I would do you, that through you, right, Gary, not the, not the undertaker?
Correct.
Right? All right.
But if you need the number, it's seven two five oh one.
I don't want to call right, I don't want to call right now. I have my own personal relationship.
He's gone.
Oh, he left.
So the stuff, though, because the, it's on Metropolis, right, so the next street over, or the next thing over will be the condo development, so that's all multifamily. I don't know if the plan was maybe to, you know, and my point is, were we to do this, I feel like it might be worth kicking it over to ZBA, see if they might consider making both pieces R1A, since it's a little bit more generous on the setback. And is your client's intent at any future time to build a multifamily home?
No, for the reason is, like Bob said, it's eighty-four feet wide, but it's several hundred feet deep, but only has one road frontage.
Right.
So you can build one house there of significant size, and still have a big backyard and a big front yard because of the dimensions of the property.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't house multiple.
Sure. So.
Because if you're going to have multi, you'd need like close to three hundred feet of width, so that you can put your buildings, your driveways, and you have your setbacks. Because a few years ago in Chesterfield, they adopted a multifamily district for width with setbacks, and I showed them that with the setbacks, if you had a hundred-foot wide lot, you could only build a building the width of a line on a piece of paper, because their setbacks were so. So then I got several people, variances for multifamily, and then they finally changed the ordinance and said, it's got to be more realistic, if you have a legally, you know, and it's a legally plotted lot.
Yeah, we had, we had a lot here in, in the city, on Brew Street, that the lot line ran through the middle of the lot, and the builder bought it, so half of it's in Conderville and half of it's in the city.
Oh, yeah, right.
That's got to be a fun one. Anyway, I would like to propose then that we kick this over to ZBA and zone it fully R1A.
That would, I think the planning commission would hear.
Our planning commission would start.
Would hear a rezoning, right.
Okay. How would I know that? I've never served in that before.
Right.
Only thing that I would say, if you're going to send it to the planning commission, that we don't have to pay the price to go through that.
Correct.
Process of the city. Because they didn't have anything to do with having the split.
No, 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 we can initiate the rezoning at the city commission level.
Right.
You can, you have the authority to initiate.
If we initiate it, it's not on them.
Right.
Only if the homeowner.
You don't even have to come.
But it's, I will. Because like years ago, like down where the gravel pits are, this way, I think.
Yeah.
You know, part of that got rezoned to multifamily riverfront, and the St. Clair County's road yard, the gravel pit depot was there, and then we got into litigation over that, that it was a non-conforming use, it went to the Michigan Supreme Court, and Detroit Bullock Storage and myself, we prevailed that we could use it, because it was zoned originally as a stone yard. And the road commission said, hey, we never got notice that you were rezoning our property to a residential use. Where the McCloud yard, just to the north of that, it stayed industrial.
Right.
So, and then I think you guys eventually rezoned the road commission property back to industrial.
I think that's because a municipality can go anywhere.
Yeah, right.
In any zoning.
So you can make a motion to approve these terms and that, have us reduce them to something that is signable, and then we can initiate the rezoning. Do you want it to be R1, or A, or B?
Well, let me talk to them, because that will take you.
And then we'll make it all one zoning.
Consistent rezoning.
Consistent rezoning category.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the terms of this proposal from tonight, and allow the attorneys to work out some type of agreement to come back to the commission with.
Support.
What about the rezoning?
What about the zoning?
And to initiate.
And to initiate consistent. To correct the zoning.
Okay, we have a motion and support bill?
Yes.
We have a motion and support. We may have roll call vote?
Probably should.
Yeah. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got to add one other thing, I'm proud of my family's accomplishments. My one sister worked for the Ice Cupades. Her husband was the vice president of Ringling Brothers Circus, and at one time she managed the Rose Bowl Coliseum and the Los Angeles Coliseum, and I went to the Rose Bowl.
All that, and you're just an attorney.
Right.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. All right, moving on to eight twenty-three Brew Street. We have an appraisal. Holly, you want to talk about this?
Sure. Like, when he was in this role, per your decision, he had sent out this piece of property for an appraisal. So in your packet, you'll see what has come back. We think it's a tad low. And one of the things that I wanted to kind of accompany that document was what the city spent to clean up that property, which was, the demolition was seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So I think that you may need to look at upping your price a hair to try to break even, or get a little bit closer. Twenty-five hundred dollars is not going to get you there.
Right.
I do understand, though, that there, it is a non-conforming lot. If somebody did want to purchase the piece, they would have to get a variance to build because of the setbacks. However, if a neighbor buys it, if this is twenty-five hundred dollars, is still very low, if you want to try to break even.
It's very low.
But I would recommend trying to get it on the tax roll, so.
Yeah, I think that we, we need to bring it to, what you said was seven eight ninety-nine, I mean, eight thousand dollars for a lot is still fairly inexpensive.
Agreed.
You know. So I'm going to make a motion to price this at eight thousand dollars, so we can at least recoup our costs.
Yeah, and are you putting it on the market for sale? Put it on the market for sale.
And I think we need to put it on the market for sale. Support. We have a motion and support. Any discussion?
I know we put this on the market once before, didn't we? Didn't get any.
The market is.
She put it out for bids or something, once before.
Yeah, but the market's different now, I mean.
Well, I understand that, I'm just saying, I thought she put it out and couldn't get anybody to bite on it once before. Well, sure.
Well, it's four thousand each.
Drop in the bucket.
Uh, okay, so I just, I guess I have some questions about how that is initiated and done. Would that insinuate that, then, if it did get put out for sale, that there would be no bargaining, or would we have to vote again on that?
You'd have to vote again.
Anytime I bought a house, it never goes for what it's asking.
Sure.
Any purchase has to come back to this.
Okay.
This body.
Okay, so, so it's eight grand or nothing?
We're just going to try to sell it for eight.
Got it, okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Is the legal description, and is that including that alley that runs behind that Brew Street project, that they've been fighting over for years?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, that, it was just another yard. Somebody else's yard behind it, I recall.
Okay, so we have a motion and support.
And we discussed.
And we discussed. Is this, I'm not doing roll call votes for each one, no.
No, you're good.
All right, that's what I thought. All right, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carried. Moving on to three oh three South Water Street, the appraisal for the Guy Center. Again, I got to tell you, I think that this appraisal was low for a Water Street property, River View, I mean, it goes on and on and on, right, right smack dab in the middle of downtown. I'd like to make a motion to put this back out to get a commercial appraiser, an, an actual commercial appraiser to, to come out. And, you know, we, see what we can get.
Are we ever going to have meetings on this to discuss it with the community?
Yeah, that's something that we're going to, well, not for this piece of property, we're going, we were going to do a work group for Three Hundred Broadway.
So there's going to be no discussion on this property?
Was it this one?
It was this one.
This one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I don't think it's ready, though. I mean, you need.
I don't think it's ready to discuss until you get a, an appraisal.
Yes, first we got to get an appraisal, that's, that's the motion.
I'm just making sure that we're going to have the discussion, and it just doesn't go for.
Work group, town halls, whatever.
Yeah, the towns.
Correct, that's all I'm verifying.
Okay.
So you're looking for somebody to go back, we want to go back out for a commercial?
For, yeah, just for a commercial appraisal, instead of somebody, I mean, believe me, I've dealt with Mike Bachelor a lot, I, you know, he's a great guy. But I think that we just need to get somebody from, we just need another opinion. It's like going to the doctor, you need second opinion, so. Somebody that's into commercial real estate. Okay?
But do, did we have a problem getting, when we put this out for bid, getting realtors?
We had, we had a second person that put in a, who was that again? We had, we had somebody that came in. Chris, do you remember?
We, I think it came in too late.
But it came in like.
It missed the deadline. So we only had the one from Bachelor, but we did get a second one that came in past the deadline.
We need to broaden our search a little.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
One thing, too, is this is misleading, because it shows it going all the way to the river.
True.
Well, I'm just saying, this particular.
Yeah, that's why we need a commercial appraiser.
Okay.
Yeah, are they counting the floodplain in there? I said they're probably going to drop there in their front with the flood, floodplain. You've got five eighty is your flood elevation, and you got. Well, would we flood that basement twice?
Those are the hundred-year events.
Right.
It's an ice jam event, that can happen every year.
So there's a motion on the table, any other discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I fully agree with everybody, in my eyes, as a, if I were a business owner, personally speaking, I wouldn't want the hassle of having waterfront property. Number two, if you broke this up, you know, you ruin the contiguousness of the Riverwalk, what little of it we have. And, yeah, I, the, the River View with none of the responsibility of having waterfront property is
Perfect.
the ideal. Trust me. And, yeah, that, so, I'd agree, that, I mean, for, for those reasons is why I, again, resound everyone's opinion that we should kick it back out.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I didn't hear a second.
So I.
Nobody, I'll second it, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. And now we're talking about Three Hundred Broadway. I make a motion to specifically take Three Hundred Broadway proposal into a work group setting, to discuss all the issues thoroughly, and that would be in a public setting as well. Work groups are a little different than subcommittees, because there's no, there's no voting or decisions. So a work group is open to the public. Anybody can come, and we can discuss the fate of Three Hundred Broadway.
Support.
Any discussion? We have a motion and support.
Um, I have.
I would, I would just recommend that all those sessions, however many you have, be subject to an agenda with a posting, so the public is aware of the time and the place and the meeting. And maybe agree to have more than one.
Right.
Can I also suggest that you send this out for appraisal, so we have that number for the work group as well?
Yes. So, so so is that part of the motion then? So I, because I, I thought that I included that with three oh three South Broadway, but I guess I need a specific one. So, so not only do I make the motion to start a work group, but also to get another commercial appraisal for Three Hundred Broadway.
Specifically as a reference.
As a reference.
Well, so you know what you're talking about.
We have assets that we need to know our, the price of.
Yes.
You know. Okay. That was my motion.
Wendy, do you agree to that?
And she supported, yeah.
I support it.
Okay, so, any other discussions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. All right. So, that means we're not going to do anything with this particular. So, that means we're not going to do anything with this particular agreement, okay? But my question is, my question still comes back to the property. The property is a park. And I know you removed the buildings from the planning commission, but the park is still in the master plan. And in the charter, the, it says, "We cannot sell parks or cemeteries unless it's under some type of statute," which I'm not, that's your legal part for me. So, what does that mean? It's, because it's clear in the charter. So, how do we do this with this particular piece of property? Is it just the building, or is it going to encompass the property also? And if it is, and if it's a park, what are the rules for that?
I would think that that's why we're going to get a commercial appraiser, so they can, they're the ones that are the professionals and can look at all that.
It's not what I'm asking.
It is not a park, though. Correct.
It is a park. It was designated a park by Elaine McKenzie a long time ago. She was on the board. They did designate that whole square as a park. So, and it was a park, I believe, earlier than that, you said there was-
The planning commission recommended, and this board approved, the change that that property is removed as a park on the city block.
We remove the building, that's what I understand. Not, we can't do the park. The park is a separate entity.
Commissioner, I'm just telling you what we approved and what you voted on.
But it's still in your book.
Beg your pardon. That property is no longer designated as a park in the city plan.
I don't think you can-
You voted on it.
The master plan, we, we voted on removing the buildings. You told us we were removing the buildings. So that they could be sold.
We, I think what we did was, the requirement was that you can't sell something that's designated as a park, so we voted to remove these from the master plan as parks.
Correct.
The properties.
But it's, the last master plan I had, it still is in there.
Well, Commissioner, the master plan gets rewritten every five years. It is amended as we go along from there, so.
So, if it hasn't been removed and it's still in there, then that's a problem.
You're definitely hard of hearing.
No, I'm not. If you, if we voted to re, no, I want to finish this. If we voted to remove it from the master plan, then it should be removed from the master plan. If it's still in the master plan, then there's a problem.
Well, I, I think, I think what, what you're saying is, master plans are revisited and reviewed every five years.
Which we just did.
And they're supposed to be updated. Lots of things happen during the five years that you don't run out and amend your master plan every time. You wait until you, you have some things. So, we'll have to look back, but I know there was a vote, and I know we remanded this to the planning commission, and I know you guys took action on it, and I know we voted on it. So, we just have to recapture that, and that can be part of our discussion.
Yeah, because from what I remember, it was just the buildings.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll go back through it, and then at these work sessions, we'll, we should be able to come to these work sessions knowing, you know, what is the value of the asset?
Right.
What part of the asset can we legally sell? And do we want to sell it? And that'll be the topics.
That's why we're, that's why we're having-
And I think they should be well-publicized. I know the public wants to be heard on these issues, and, and you guys should listen, and, and, and how you designate that work group discussion, however you do it, I encourage you to comply with the Open Meetings Act.
Right. Okay. So, we have a, a motion and support. Any other, anybody else?
I ask that the motion be read back such that we can potentially amend based on Bob's recommendations.
Okay.
Um, how, it was pieced together, but how I have it here is, we form a work group that's open to the public to discuss the future of 300 Broadway, and also go out for a commercial appraisal on the property.
Perhaps add that, confirm, yeah, that-
That the work group sessions will be held, published, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, and that there will be more than one. Gives everybody a chance to check them out.
Do you want that in the motion, or as a side note on there?
Uh, in the motion.
Okay.
And what about the confirming that the property?
Well, that, that, those are the-
It's a natural outcome of the work group.
Yeah, those are the things that we have to bring to the meeting.
Great.
Yeah, they're doing the updates every five years, and we talked about this at the planning commission, I brought it up, is that ma, that, that master, the master plan and stuff hasn't been done in longer than five years. And now, wait a minute. You, you had your say. Let me talk. And I asked you about, you get people to come in, and you try to tell them what the zoning is. If the zoning map isn't right, and somebody's trying to buy a precinct property, what are you going to do? You, you need to update the zoning map. It hasn't been done in a long, long time.
Okay, that, but we have a motion and a second on the table.
I'm just making my comments.
This will all come out with the commercial appraisal. So, with that being said, roll call vote?
Yes.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
So, we can't split these two items out?
What two items are we, we're talking about 300 Broadway?
One is the work group, one is the building.
One, the appraisal part?
Yeah. I'd prefer to split it, but. I can agree on the work group, but.
I made a motion. We have a second on the motion, so we're, that's what we're voting on.
Then I'll vote no.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
I didn't hear you. I didn't say anything yet. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you did. I was. I want to date that stuff.
So, yes or no? I'm sorry. Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, moving on to the electronic sign, municipal building sign, that we were going to have moved. Holly, you want to talk about this?
Sure. In meeting with Mike, and hearing the public, there had been plenty of comments about not moving the sign, because people were enjoying reading it from the gas station. So, we've heard you, and we're making the recommendation that we do not move the electronic sign, that it remains where it is. Nothing had been purchased for, to actually move it here yet, so we are out no money by making that decision now. Instead, we'd like to look at doing something that is not an electronic sign, but something a little bit classier to put out front. Some, you know, we're looking at some different opinions, like the fire department sign, something like that, that will cost much less and not change up what everybody already likes.
Identify the building, but not necessarily give news.
Exactly. Yes. Yeah.
So, is that what this picture is in the back here?
That was one of the things that we were looking at, but we don't want to do that. It looks like a street sign.
So, you're going to bring us back something else once you come up with?
Yes. Um, Mike's been talking to some of the folks in the public to see if they have some ideas on some, some cool-looking signs to kind of mark the building and make it special.
So, then we're not doing anything at this point with this?
Nope. Just an FYI.
Okay.
Do we need to make a motion to file this or anything?
Nope.
Not this one.
Okay.
But agreed. Thank you.
And now, we're going to the, um, new business? What?
Eagle Updates, 10B. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's been a long day.
I know. I know it has been. So, we're going to the, uh, new business, the City Marine City Mission Statement. And this is for the Economic Development Board, correct? Yes. Yes. Oh, the City Marine, I'm sorry, yes. So, we've all had a chance to, to review it. This was, we looked at a, a bunch of different mission statements, and this one kind of encompasses everything that we need to say about the City Marine City.
Should we read it aloud for the benefit of the community watching?
Would you like me to?
Sure.
I can.
It's, it's well worded, it's well worded.
It is very well worded.
It deserves praise.
So, the mission statement is as follows. "In partnership with our community, the City of Marine City is committed to protecting and enhancing the quality of life for our residents and for those involved with the promotion, development, and preservation of the city. The City of Marine City is dedicated to providing our citizens and business owners with a safe and clean environment, a high level of administrative and government services, and diverse opportunities for community development." There we go. Uh, any discussion? So, I make a motion to, to approve the mission statement for the City Marine City?
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All right, all in favor by signifying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, Eagle Updates. Mike, you're going to talk about this?
See my memo, we got a couple violations down at the wastewater treatment plant during inspection. They got us four bench sheets, which they wanted updated bench sheets, but nobody actually told us. Okay, the same day they gave, came there, we gave them the bench sheets, the updated ones, and they said, "Okay." As it states in the violation letter, and, um, the second one was a sampling procedures. Uh, the BLDs, we use the United States Postal Service Office to mail the BLDs. They were getting there a little late, maybe a day or two late sometimes. So, the result of this, we're doing five days a week now. So, we only do three samples a week. We're setting five, and so far, we've been all good. The second one is a surpriser. The third one actually is the sampling pumps we put, composite samplers. This one, this one makes office mad. We put a time-proportional composite sampler in, replaced the other one that failed. Well, DEQ decided to, or Eagle decided to tell us that we need to make this new one flow-proportional, and didn't bother telling us that. You know, they could, gave us a letter and said, "Hey, you need to make this flow-proportional." But no, they gave us violations then. So, we are doing an act, Part 41 for that one. I have a curb pump, and I have, um, moisture from Murrayville coming in to run the line to make it into a flow-proportional unit. And hopefully, we get this resolved in the next 30 days.
Has Eagle ever, like, given you these type of violations?
No.
So, can I, can I comment on this a little bit? So, this, first of all, the biological oxygen demand issues, the, the hold time is the problem on those.
Right.
So, it's a, one of those samples that it, it only has a certain shelf life, and if you were mailing them, they probably just were extending beyond the shelf life. Happens all the time. It's not a major issue. This flow versus time-proportional testing, though, is one that bothers me, because Eagle is going to, not just you.
Yep.
They're going up and down Grasset, up and down Grozpec, up and down all the industrial corridors in Michigan, telling people, they want everybody on flow-proportion testing. They don't want time-proportion testing anymore. And so, the minute you have a glitch, they want, and it's expensive. It's an expensive conversion. It's not going to be a cheap conversion, unless I'm wrong. It's going to cost some money.
We don't know yet. I haven't had nobody in there yet.
It's going to cost money to go to Florida.
Uh, thanks.
But, um, with, with them, we've been able, there is, there, there is, I don't suggest we do it here, but there is some testing that you can do, where you can demonstrate to Eagle that time versus flow isn't going to make a difference.
They won't let us do it.
I was going to tell you that. Yeah, and they, they, they're very, they're kind of, they're kind of hesitant, aren't they? Because they know, they know that when you, if you do the study that I'm talking about, and you, you know what I'm talking about, that it will come out that the results will be the same.
Yep.
But, but flow-proportional testing is, is a change. I mean, it's a significant change, and I would like, before we commit to that, to hear what the cost is going to be.
Well, our new sampler, composite samplers can do that already.
They can do flow?
Yes. We just have, we have to run a 12, 12 MA from our flow to our sampler, our flow meter to our sampler.
So, it shouldn't be too bad?
No.
Okay, it's just, I, I just, I don't understand their thinking on this, but-
We don't either.
Yeah. But the, the BOD thing, very common issue among people who have to do those oxygen demand tests. The other one, the first one, is a non-issue. The-
Bench sheets.
The bench sheet should be fine. Right. So, to answer your question, if you were having it, is this is not an unusual letter right now for this department?
I was just curious, because I know that Eagle also wants us to consolidate with East China, and we'd like to remain our own separate entity.
So do they.
Didn't, didn't East China have an issue?
That's another topic that we're getting to later on.
Did we get an answer on that? Because we haven't seen that.
No.
I know it was submitted to the state.
We're going to be having meetings with Eagle here shortly.
Yes.
But East China had an issue.
East China's, yeah, they had a problem with their springboard water tower, and they kept us on standby in case they had a fire or anything else up there, so we can open up our interconnect to feed them water.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody, any other questions for Mike?
What's a Part 41 permit?
That's a permit you got to fill out anytime you change machinery in the sewer plant, or any plants.
Got it.
This is a sampler. This is not part of machinery or part of the works of the sewer plant. This thing, this machine is in a laboratory, takes samples only.
Right.
And that's where a lot of us are frustrated about.
So, they demanded that you do the Part 41?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions on the Eagle Updates?
So, is this just a, excuse me, a motion to receive and file?
We don't even need a motion. We're just, it's just an update. And then, now we're moving on to smoke testing, and Mike and I will stay right there.
I am.
On the sanitary sewer system.
You know that we have infiltration coming into our Bell River pump station. Every time we get half-inch rain, we get swamped down there. Not swamped all the way, but we, our, our flow rate goes way, way high. In some cases, we have to bring in a couple of extra pumps, four-inch pumps, to pump it to the gravity side, so we don't flood basements. We found one catch, one catch basin tied in the sanitary off M29 going into it. I contacted PCE. We feel that smoke testing Bell River Road, all the way to the end, up to the Drudge Cut, and part of the Gersi, I'm thinking we're going to find a lot of catch basins or a lot of infiltration from the river in there. That's what the game plan is right now. And then, from that point, we'll move out into, um, like, across here in the field, where the sanitary sewer goes out here. We'll fit, we'll do that one to make sure that we got nothing going in and water coming in from out here.
Didn't some of that get done during the SAW grant?
No. Nope, it was never applied for.
Okay.
That's one thing that it should have been. So, we budgeted $15,000, and to do this short section, it's going to be $6,848, I believe. I don't have my glasses on.
$6,848, yeah. Uh, and then, to do the remainder, you think it would probably be about the same, then?
Well, we're going to see where this one comes out first.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, and if you look at your map, that little pump station at the back, around Bell River and West St. Clair, where a couple of you people toured, that's all the area that goes through there. So, and we, we do know that there wants to be some growth out on King Road a little bit, and out King Road, and we need to get this taken care of before anything else can be hooked to it from out there.
Okay. Any questions for Mike?
Aren't, uh, aren't every municipality having this problem with the rain? That this is a bad year.
This, yes, everybody's having this problem with the rain. Everybody's trying, Conchville Township is doing the same thing we are right now. They're smoke testing, relining pipes. We might have to- We might have to reline pipes, we might, you know, find five more catch basins in the sanitary. But we have to start somewhere, and we need to get start working on this.
How do we catch the violators?
How do we catch them?
I can tell you, there's one that's in Cotterville. It goes into our system.
You'd have to call Cotterville on that.
And it, when it rains, his yard floods, and he takes the manual cutter off. They know it.
That's quite common, that happens all over. We find basketballs in our sewer system.
We just talked about that.
Yes, we did.
The ball floats.
Any other questions for Mike? All right, I need a motion to waive competitive bidding.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now I need a motion to approve the bid from Project Control Engineering for six thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any questions on that? All right, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Verkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I give you an update on the water main project?
You want to?
Yes, I do.
I want you to.
Good. All the twelve inch main is in, all the eight inch main is in, all been pressure tested, all chlorinated, all bacteria samples came back great. We started hooking up the interconnections like North Elizabeth or South Elizabeth today. Tomorrow we're hooking up South Main, and hopefully by the end of this, next week, we'll have that water main tied in all the other mains, and the old ten inch shut down, and paving within two weeks. That's what we're hoping for.
Just before the snow flies.
What's that?
Just before the snow flies.
We're hoping, we're hoping to have this thing wrapped up by the end of October.
Yeah.
So it's moving along pretty fast.
Is there any recommendation to run water for any period of time or something with brand-new pipes? You know what I mean?
No, we back, we flush everything, we pressure test, bacteria test, then we flush. We actually take two bacteria tests twenty-four hours apart.
Okay.
Okay, and then once, before we hook the service, the main, the old mains up to it, we flush out the new main again, and then we hook the old main into it, we go down and hook, open up a hydrant, and we flush that out again, and make, take a chlorine sample to make sure we got good chlorine coming through there.
Okay.
So, we try to protect everybody.
Sure, no, very good to hear, thank you.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you. And we don't have any items removed from the consent agenda, so now we're moving on to the city manager's report. And I like the format.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm not gonna say much, because I'm about to lose my voice. So, I'll keep it short tonight. This is my first official city manager's report. As you can see, in the one month I've been here, it's not been dull. There's a lot going on. Lot of meetings, a lot of meet and greets. I've been trying to get out into the public and meet as many people as I can, kind of learn needs, wants, concerns, let everybody know that I am available and ready to work with everyone, and excited about the projects on the table, and new upcoming things that we may need to tackle. So, it has been a busy month, and there's a lot to acclimate to within the office, learning the budget, learning what issues are out there, learning just how to log into everything. I mean, it's been a very busy month, but it's been good. I will say, I will add, Mike gave me good news today, that the kayak launch did arrive this week. It is not going to go in now, because it's so late in the season, we'll put it in the spring. But it is here. Sorry.
Come on.
So, if you have any questions on my report, feel free to reach out, but I think that's about all I've got tonight.
Okay. Any questions for the city manager? All right, good, moving on to Commissioner Privilege and the liaison reports, and Commissioner Bryson.
Okay, I have two things. First, we received a letter from Mr. Paul Gallus, who was running the tour boat, and I'd just like to read it. It states, "I've been a boat captain in the Great Lakes most, my whole life. No one loves and respects the water more than me. Even though I retired my boat services, I don't want to end on a sour note. It was said at a commission meeting that one of my boats was leaking gas in the Bell River. That statement is absolutely not true. If gas was near my boat, it most certainly did not come from my boat. It could have come from any bone areas, fuel spreads a sheen on the water. I don't want anyone to think that I was irresponsible with my business or my boats. I've always run a respectable business and have a great reputation, want to continue to have a great reputation even in retirement. Thank you, Captain Paul Gallus." So I would like to say, if there is an oil spill, if you think there is an oil spill in the river, call the Coast Guard. They have the sole jurisdiction for enforcing pollution in navigable waterways. Having said that, as we in our country have a presumption of innocence, I think that Mr. Gallus deserves to have that applied to him with respect to any oil spills, as I don't believe he's ever been cited for one in that area, so... So that's item number one. Number two, at our last regular meeting during Commissioner Privilege, Lisa stated that most of the commissioners, as well as the mayor, were spineless and did not care about Marine City. I resent the statement. Up until this point, I felt that while we could disagree regarding specific issues, we could still accord each other with respect and dignity. While I believe that dissent and spirited argument is a healthy thing in a governmental body, I also believe that it should be confined to the issues in front of the body. Instead, you chose to attack the character of every commissioner that didn't completely and wholeheartedly agree with you. This attack on the character and integrity of your colleagues was uncalled for and wrong. I don't think there's a single person sitting on this commission that's not trying their utmost to do what they believe is best for the city. Speaking for myself, I'm not here for the money, I have no business ties with Marine City. I'm not here to further my political career. I'm here because this is where my family and I chose to live, and I want to do my part to ensure that the city continues in an upward positive direction instead of slipping into stagnation and/or decay. In addition to falsely insinuating that I and the rest of the commission don't care about the city, you also called the spineless. Again, just speaking for myself, over the course of my career, I've had to make a large number of difficult decisions. Many of these decisions directly impacted people deployed in war zones around the world. Most of the time, I had to choose between a course of action that was easy and popular versus one that I thought was a right. Every time, I carefully weighed the alternatives and made the best choice I could, irrespective of how unpopular and difficult the outcome would be. Furthermore, after making, I make a decision, I take responsibility for it. Thus resulted in me volunteering to deploy to the Middle East nine separate times, so that if and when a problem did present itself, I could deal with it in the quickest manner possible. If I'm to be considered spineless for making the best decisions that I can, and then following them up to ensure their success, often at great peril to my personal safety, then I would like to know how you would describe someone that has a backbone. Once again, I welcome a spirited debate. I think that it's healthy and allows the commission to flush out all alternatives before making the best decision that we can. However, just because one or more of your fellow commissioners doesn't agree with you, this doesn't justify your attacking their character or integrity. I would request that next time you have the urge to start having diarrhea of the mouth and besmirching someone's reputation, please keep your teeth together for a moment and think about whether your comments deal with the issue at hand, or whether they're just another childish and uncalled-for personal attack because you don't like their opinion. That being said, if you'd like to offer a sincere apology to myself and the rest of the commission for your comments during Commissional Privilege at our last meeting, I'm more than willing to forgive and move on. Thank you.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Well, I have nothing to apologize for. I've been on this board a long time, and I've seen a lot of different boards. And I guess the sad part is, I don't expect any of you to agree with me, but when things go wrong and I see how badly it's handled, yeah, I'm gonna call you out on it. One thing I think you all have to remember too, and maybe I did it, but I do it in an overall. We have rules of the commission, and you might want to go back and read those, because there's been some violations in those. But I'm not gonna apologize for it, it's very difficult. I've been on here a long time, I've seen boards come and go. I've seen people make a lot of bad decisions, and I've seen a lot of poor employees get displaced because of it. And you guys have been on here a short time. You have no idea sometimes how things go. I do, I've seen it, and I've seen it too long. But that last meeting was very, very bad. And I think there was a lot of people that were informed of the information before the meeting. I think they just didn't want to listen to some of the ideas. I know the board never wants to listen to anything I have to say. I know the board never wants to hear all the questions I have, but that's our job. And I know this job, I've learned it from my mom. She wasn't always popular in some of the things she said either, and she made some real good comments too. But the problem is, is let's deal with the issue. And the fact is, that last meeting, based on these minutes, that last meeting was not documented properly. So I've got a lot of good complaining here to do, and you can sit there and rip on me all you want, it doesn't make any difference to me, one way or another. But I'm gonna continue, and I do my job for this community. The people contact me on a regular basis. This is exactly what I'm talking about, is these minutes. They were written to somebody else's specifications, not to actually what happened at the meeting. That needs to change. But I don't see a whole lot changing in here, just like normal. The board changes, but the issues don't seem to ever change here. And I know a lot of people out in this community that agree with that. And again, like I said, I'm on the out vote, you guys control the vote, not me. So to sit there and say, you can say what you want, you control it, but all I expect you to do is the right thing once in a while, and at that last meeting, the right thing wasn't done.
You done?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Callahan.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Commissioner Clausen.
We have a planning commission meeting Monday to discuss stuff, and I'll bring it up again, that I think that we need to get that zoning stuff straightened out. We have people that come in and want to move into their property businesses, and they go and get a map that's not up to date. I think that, and I know it's been more than five years. I sat on the planning commission for a long time, and then I'm sitting on it as a board rep for the last eight years. I just think that we have to, we just have to look at the good for the city and do the right things, that's all I can say. Thank you.
Commissioner Ross.
Regarding what Jake said, especially the letter that was read by Paul, or Jake read from Paul, I can agree, I paddled my kayak by the boat several times. A few times looking for a kayak launch, it was not there. But, no problem. Couple meetings ago, thought maybe, but anyway, the, it is the man's integrity, and I for one can absolutely attest to, you know, I've been in marinas quite a bit, and a two-stroke boat needs to go by for two seconds, and it will put a, an old two-stroke needs to go by once, and it will put a sheen on the water around tons of boats. So, I understand, and same, I am a hundred percent for the environment and keeping it clean, and especially our lakes, and most especially our own community. But, you know, people just need to make sure they understand both sides of the story before pointing accusations, I think. And at least in my experience, again, I would drive by and peek every time. Every time I crossed the Lagoon Bridge, I'd check to make sure there was no iridescence, which would be indicative of, you know, hydrocarbon substance or gasoline or fuel of some sort, which I think is boats are diesel, anyway, but, yeah, I always checked. I paddled by there multiple times too, never found anything, so... Again, as a community member, our job is to, you know, understand your complaints, your thoughts, your feelings, but please make sure to, you know, back it up with evidence and things like that. It makes your job easier, it gives us a stronger foot to stand on, and just helps everybody in the long run. Regarding the other comments made by people, I am one of the newer commissioners, I haven't been here forever. But, you know, I've been around plenty of corporations and companies and seen politics within that, and, you know, pointing fingers is rarely the best way to get things done. So, in my personal experience, understanding both sides and looking at things objectively, and, you know, keeping, trying to keep passion out of it is usually the way that things do end up getting done. I, that I'm aware of, am the only commissioner with my cellphone number, my personal cellphone number on my card, that everybody, anybody who has Facebook should have. Mr. Alexiak posted that, and, you know, I've received a few calls, but, you know, my door's always open, and I'm always willing to hear and listen to things that you think would make this city better, and that's all I'm out here to do. As Jake mentioned, I moved my family here because I love this city, and I want to make it a better place. That's why I'm on this board. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just on the, on the, I spoke to Paul at length today, I've stayed in touch with him since he left.
Want to see a picture?
I just wanted to give you an update, so we're gonna sign a short document that ends the lease. He took the other boat up to, I think, the Riverbend or the River something Marina up in...
St. Clair.
St. Clair.
Riverbend.
He's going down to see his boat on the fourteenth of October in Chicago. He's a little, he's a little disturbed because the guy cut the roof off, but they've turned it into a, an architectural boat, so it's gonna take tours, and so everyone could equally see the architecture that will be pointed out. Pollution Emergency Alerting System, PES, I know the number by heart, I wrote it down here for you, eight hundred two nine two forty-seven oh six. As a young lieutenant in the Coast Guard, I answered that damn thing many, many nights for purposes of a violation. A reportable quantity of oil or diesel in the water is a visible sheen. So if you do see a visible sheen, you really need to contact eight hundred two nine two forty-seven oh six, and you'll get a response.
Thank you. I just want everybody to know that the DPW is asking that we do not leave leaves in the street. Do not rake your leaves in the street. You can bag them in the wastebags, and if for some reason you missed that week's pickup, you can always bring your bags to the DPW, and put the bags next to the dumpster, correct? Yes. So we can, you know, eliminate the, yeah, because when you put leaves in the street, it blocks the sewers, and it causes a whole bunch of problems. And with the amount of rain we've been having, so, yeah, please don't put your leaves in the street. I do a mayor minute once a month, and I just interviewed our new city manager, Holly Tatman, last week, and that's been airing, and I'm gonna be interviewing Chief Joe Slankster from the Fire Department on the end of October. And Halloween is October thirty-first, and trick-or-treating is from five to eight. Please be careful, leave your lights on, all that good stuff, pass out candy, have a nice community support. And that's it. Thank you very much for coming, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion and support, roll call, please.
All in favor, Scott.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? This meeting is adjourned at eight fifty PM.